Maybe the, I don't know if the mics will pick up for this.
Oh.
Some of these.
Is there anybody on?
There is.
One, two.
The presenter.
All right. Good evening, it's now 7:02 and I think we'll go ahead and call the meeting, monthly meeting of the North Oaks Council to order. Roll call please.
Commencing roll call now. Vice Chair George Salmon, Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado.
Yes.
Councilmember Evrata Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Niket Cersei. Councilmember Brooks Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Blair Whitney.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly Parisi. Councilmember Mariela Prata. Chair Kathleen Dowey.
Here. We'll go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please bring us up to the. Do you have any public comment here tonight?
No.
Then let's go ahead and move on. We'll move on to agenda item number one. The Mid Penn Regional Open Space District introduction and update for us on what they're up to. So do you get people here? You can.
Oh, you have that done?
We do, yes.
Good evening, Council. And thank you so much for this opportunity to present the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to you. My name is Margaret Beck Levin and I am one of the seven directors on the board. So can I just say next slide, next slide? Mid Penn's mission is to acquire and preserve a regional green belt of open space, land in perpetuity and protect and restore the natural environment and provide opportunities for ecologically sensitive public enjoyment and education. On the coast, Mid Penn has expanded its mission to acquire and preserve agricultural land of regional significance, preserve rural character and encourage viable agricultural uses of the land. Next slide, please. Here is a map of the San Francisco Peninsula showing the current Mid Penn Green Belt of 72,000 acres in San Mateo and Santa Cruz and Santa Clara, Santa Clara Counties. And on the side, so where the dark green and the light green is protected lands. Various other organizations post Save the Redwoods, state parks and county parks. Next slide, please. So in summary, Mid Penn is a special district funded primarily through property taxes. There are some 760 constituents in San Mateo, Santa Clara and Santa Cruz Counties with a seven-member elected Board of Directors. We have 27 open space preserves and 250 miles of trails. Hiking is allowed on all trails, biking on about 60% of the trails. Horse riding is allowed on some trails and many of the preserves. And dogs on leash there, except in Pulgas Ridge and San Carlos, there is an off-leash, off-leash dog area. So I thought I'd whet your appetite and show you some pretty pictures of our preserves that capture the beauty of the land that you have protected. Okay, next slide. Let's just go through these. This is Ravenswood. And on the bay, next. Pulgas Ridge with the dogs, next. Alcorta Madera up on skyline, beautiful redwoods and that's fine. La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve on the road down to the coast, next. Russian Ridge where there's beautiful wildflowers, especially at this time of the year. Definitely you should take a trip up there if you've got time. Next. Ownland Open Space, a little local park and preserve in Woodside. Next. Windy Hill, iconic Windy Hill above Butto Valley. And next, that's it. Just a few very lovely places. So, next slide, please. In 2014, voters showed their support for Mid Penn by approving a $300 million general obligation bond to support public open spaces, open space priorities and further require and protect these public lands. So thank you for your trust in us. So here's a synopsis of some of the projects we've been working on. Thanks in no small part to these extra funds. Next. Acquiring land. This is Cloverdale branch down on the coast. It's just south of Pascadero. And we bought it from Post Peninsula Open Space District Trust, Peninsula Open Space Trust, who had been accumulating this land since the 1990s. And they are a nonprofit organization. They do not steward land. So the goal always was to turn it over to Mid Penn for stewardship, protection and public access. We've actually already purchased 5,100 acres and we have an option to purchase the remaining 1,200. So that's pretty exciting for us. Cloverdale provides significant habitat to an array of plants and wildlife, including the federally listed endangered San Francisco garter snake. And it includes regionally significant creeks which provide important andromas fish habitat. Salmon, that's salmon that migrate upstream. So that's great. And currently the preserve is not open to the public, except for docent-led hikes which are advertised on the website. But there is one trail that you can go to when you like. It's called Wilbers Watch. It's off Highway 1 down by the lighthouse and you get magnificent views of the ocean when there's no fog. Okay, next slide, please. Wildland Bioresilience Program implementation. Mid Penn actively assisted wildfire's response to the 2020 CCU lightning complex fire. And here's a picture of Mid Penn staff helping to hold the line at Old Hall Road to keep it away from the bay area. Next slide, please. The wildfire underscored the need for Mid Penn to enhance its fuel reduction efforts. Of course, at the same time protecting the biodiversity of the land. So we've got a fire hazards. Oh, oh, this is how severe the fire hazard is in San Mateo County. It's pretty high. I think red is really high and, no, red is high and yellow is really high, I think. But it's high. So, and we own a lot of that land. So we have a, we have taken a full-pronged approach to fire resiliency. We have a vegetative management plan which addresses the creation and maintenance of fuel breaks and defensible space zones in a manner that is sensitive to the native ecology and biodiversity of our region. We have a prescribed fire plan which addresses whether we should actually burn the land to save it from being burned later. In a way, you know, when it's cold and rainy and just the indigenous people apparently used to do it, so we thought we would try that too. We have a pre-plan, a wildland fire pre-plan with information on the existing conditions, infrastructure and resource constraints. And then we have a monitoring plan which provides a framework to inform future management techniques. So we're approaching this in a pretty comprehensive way. Next slide, please. And here is a map showing the extent of our vegetation management work, which is either David, working pretty hard on our lands to keep them safe. We have been able to obtain some seven and a half million dollars in grant funding for this work, as well as we've leveraged another nine million for our regional partners who now include fire safe councils and fire districts. We take our responsibility very seriously. Next slide, please. Youth outreach. Since 2020, the board approved a youth outreach program. And for example, here you see a saved by nature outing on Russian Ridge in Coastside Children's outing at Persima Creek Redwoods and Spaces and Species outings at the Daniels Nature Center on Skyline. We partner with Latina Outdoors, Grassroots Ecology, San Jose Conservation Corps, Environmental Volunteers, Santa Clara Library District, Save the Redwood League for High School Students, and more recently, a partnership with the Sienna Youth Center right here in North Fair Oaks. So next slide. We, as you can see, the Sienna Youth Kids are hiking what looks like a pretty hot day. And I just want to take a moment to read this touching quote from the program director, Joel Flores. It says, it's kind of touching. So, "Thanks to the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, our youth has had the opportunity to be immersed in a rare environment, not dominated by pollution, noise and bustle. Not only did they exercise and enjoy clean air, but they also learned about some of the intricacies of our local environment. Jeff, Ellen and all the volunteers emanated a palpable enthusiasm that created an inviting view for our youth. Mid Penn should be especially commended for welcoming our bilingual and monolingual Spanish speakers. Everyone was encouraged to speak in the language they were most comfortable in. For these reasons, we hope this summer was merely an auspicious start to continuing partnerships between the Sienna Youth Center and Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District." So, in the interest of your time, thank you for your time. We'll just run through the next few slides. So next slide, please. We're working on highway crossings for, to give animals another way to get across the highway so we don't bang into them and kill them. So we're working on one on Highway 17 right now. Next. Trail connections. There's a big community that loves to hike from the bay to the coast, so we are working on connecting all our various trails. Next. Human, lion, mountain lion, human interaction studies, which will inform wildlife management and public use decisions to protect wildlife and at the same time reduce potential conflicts. Yeah, we have a whole program going. It's so beautiful, but dangerous. Okay, next. And this one is a big one. Redenticide outreach. Visitors to our preserve have noticed sickly animals, namely bobcats, coyotes and raptors that prey on rodents. They exhibit signs of rat poisoning, major codes, loss of weight, and it's so sad. So in an attempt to reduce the risk of poison exposure for wildlife, we're reaching out to surrounding communities to encourage the use of non-redenticide-based methods to control rodents, such as traps, zappers. Thank you. Next slide. Questions? Thank you very much. That's my. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming and presenting. Beautiful photos. So the, the organization cares for all the land that they own, in terms of maintenance, et cetera?
Yes. The interesting thing is you, the taxpayers, own this land. This is a taxpayer base. There's a little thing on your property. It's a special district. So the public owns the land, but Mid Penn is like the manager to make sure that everything's going okay. Plus, we have a very strong protection component. We like to maintain the original nice bits of California. Such a biodiverse state. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And another question I had, the program you had with the Sienna Youth Center, you have similar programs with local schools?
May I ask my Scott? Do we have schools? I don't believe we have schools, but.
Yes, we host schools. We also subsidize transportation, particularly for Title I schools. So yeah, if there's an interest, please reach out to us and we can.
Thank you.
Yes, visitors, department services. Well, there's a really, I'll get to you. There's a really nice pond on the top of Skyline at Pageville and there's an interactive center there that the kids really enjoy. So we love, we have many docents. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's the info.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, did you put your hand up?
I did. As if I had a question. I was just gonna make a statement that we're kind of parked for here. And so any opportunities to get the kids out of the urban environment into the natural one is awesome. And I think we're blessed to have, on top of the county parks, on top of everything else, the Mid Peninsula District. I've just grown up and seen what you've done from Mount Imanam up here. That was like an old Air Force Base and they turned it into like a mountaintop vista. And so there's a whole bunch of nice preserves and individually, it's nice to see them. But to share that with the next generation is awesome, so.
Yeah, that's how we recommend.
How much of the 300 million in bonds has actually been issued and spent?
Yes, yes, it's a 30-year bond. And we are 10 years into it and we've spent almost 10 million, which is a third. And just last night at the board meeting, we passed the resolution to start the process for the next 40 million to come in. Yeah.
Thank you. Can I ask one last question?
You can ask as many as you want.
So you, you said you work in Samatil County in Santa Clara as well, Santa Clara County?
A little bit of Santa.
And just a few acres and I think we have like one voter in Santa Cruz County.
Yeah. Is, is the idea or plan of the organization to continue expanding to other counties?
You know, it's a special district. There are opens in Santa Clara. There's an open space authority that works on, you know, the same. And the East Bay, there's East Bay Regional Parks District. They run that area. And as I mentioned, there's many, well, there's county parks, state parks. We're actually very lucky in this county, in San Mateo. And Santa Clara is really working on expanding their open space for the public.
Whether it's in another county, this is another question. Our enabling legislation allows us to fire land outside of our district boundaries. You know, Santa Cruz has been discussed in the past. Really, I mean, we have a revenue base and we have measured. We're always weighing, you know, the protection versus the long-term management, stewardship of those lands in the long term. So eventually you're going to see this kind of inflection point where less acquisition or dedicated funds to stewardship. And particularly in the face of climate change, stewardship activities become more apparent, like the wildfires that Margaret showed. Those high and very high fire severity. If the CCU fire easily could have spread to the rest of the coast side and top of it. Had the prevailing things changed. So that threat is still, so we still allocate lots of resources. We are hiring crews, dedicated crews to reduce fire rates. So it's always, it's not always an ongoing search.
Thank you, thank you both.
Yes.
Through the chair, I have a question. As far as the use of the open space, different parks, is it only open to hiking or is it open to horseback or what are the different uses?
Yes. We have about 250 miles of trails total and they're all open to hiking, all of them. We're working on more. 60% of our trails are set aside for bicycles, not electric bikes, just bicycles. And we do allow horses. Horses are allowed on, I think, I'm not 100% certain, I'm not a horse rider, but I know there's horses going there. And we, when we make a new parking area, we consider adding horse trailer parking. And dogs, we do allow dogs on leash in some parks. And as I said, one off-leash park, very popular.
Thanks.
I call them parks, but really we call them preserves. We don't have picnic tables and we do have bathrooms in some of them parking lot. But we try to keep everything as natural as possible. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for a beautiful presentation. Do we have any public comments? No, okay. Yes, and once again, thank you.
And I'll follow with an email sent to the council. On May 1st, we are hosting at our, we are meeting headquarters in Los Alamos. If you can make it down there, on May 1st, we're hosting a restoration of the house. So all the practitioners who take care of the land will be there to provide presentations about the work that we actually do to not just protect, but make sure the land is healthy. Please come and join us. I'll follow. See you more this summer. Yeah.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, no other public comment. I think we'll move on to item number, agenda item number two. And that is an informational presentation on State Road 84, US 101 interchange, the Reimagined Project. And it looks like we have Tiffany Getpart, project analyst from Gray, Bowen, Scott on the line.
Yes, hello.
Hi Tiffany, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Am I able to share my screen or?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will. See if I can. Are you able to see my screen okay?
Kind of.
Kind of, yeah, it's kind of.
Looks smallish.
It's not on presentation.
It might be a lag, so let me know if it, if it changes. It's full screen on my end.
Yeah, it's not fully shown.
Still not full screen?
Yeah, no, it's not full screen.
Maybe it's just, is it possible to enlarge the Zoom window? To full screen?
We, we actually can share your presentation for you.
Okay, let's just do that. I will exit out of here. I know Kenny mentioned that that might be the case, so I will. I think, I'll stop, share, here we go. I have my notes here. Okay. Well, good evening. So as it was mentioned, my name is Tiffany Getpart and I'm with Gray, Bowen, Scott. So Gray, Bowen, Scott is the consultant project management team for this project and I'm part of our communications team. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about this project. And as was stated, we're calling this SR 84 US 101 Reimagine. So we go to the next slide. So tonight I'd like to talk about the need for the project and some of the challenges with the existing conditions, which I'm sure you're, you, most of you are familiar with. And then spend the bulk of our time discussing the planned multimodal improvements. Finally, I'll review the project costs and schedule. You can, next slide. And then you can skip to the next one. So one of the challenges with this interchange, as I'm sure you're aware, is that it's a five-legged interchange, which is unusual. You have Woodside Road running east and west here and north and south 101. And then you have our fifth leg, which is Veterans Boulevard, which causes a number of operational challenges. Next slide. So this image is westbound Woodside Road at Veterans Boulevard. And one of the challenges that you can see in this image is that intersection is very close to the Broadway Woodside Road intersection further down. So this project will eliminate the intersection and construct a flyover, allowing traffic to flow more smoothly. And I'll show you some rendering images later. You can go to the next slide. So another challenge is the five-legged intersection with east and west Woodside Road, north, south and Broadway, and the 101 off-ramp here, which is the fifth leg there. So this problem, this is a problematic intersection as well, which is subject to accidents and safety concerns for bicyclists and pedestrians in addition to a lot of congestion through the area. So next slide. So this is an image of the 101 South Off-Ramp to Woodside Road on the right and then the Woodside traffic on the left. You can see where those two lanes converge and there can be issues with broadside accidents or various accidents in the intersection, as well as some collisions on 101, on 101 with the, with the traffic kind of backing up onto the freeway. So next slide. So lastly or thirdly, there are multiple slip ramps that pose safety challenges for cars, bicyclists and pedestrians that are outlined here. So if you go to the next slide, I'll demonstrate. So here's an off-ramp at Woodside and Veterans. So as you can see, slip ramps are not signalized and there is nothing really to stop the cars from entering traffic. This is also problematic for bicyclists and pedestrians. And there are also no bike or ped facilities here and throughout the interchange. So next slide. So this slide illustrates the gaps in the bicycle network around the interchange. You can see that box surrounds the interchange there. And then all of the, the gaps where there's just gray area is where there are no bicycle or pedestrian facilities. So this project will address a number of those gaps and connect the existing facilities along Woodside Road and Broadway, Bay Street and Blomquist. So next slide. And this is an example of the southbound Broadway bicycle experience where you, you see a lack of bicycle facilities there. You can go to the next slide. So again, this is an aerial of the intersection. So again, this is an aerial of the intersection of Veterans and Woodside, where you can see the lack of bicycle and pedestrian facilities as well that I just mentioned. So, next slide. So in the upcoming slides, I'll review some of the planned improvements throughout the interchange to address some of these concerns that I just brought up. So we can go to the next slide. So the, in this diagram, I'll start with the teal arrows along Veterans Boulevard. So this is a flyover in the northbound, southbound direction. And then I also want to highlight the signals, those little signal icons there along Woodside Road are going to be installed around the 101 on and off ramps, eliminating those slip ramps I mentioned previously. And so I'll talk more about the, the bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the coming slides, which is all of the green surrounding the area. Can you go to the next slide? So this image is a rendering of Woodside Road at Broadway. So first you can see, what I'll highlight here is an example of the additional turn movement on westbound Woodside onto Broadway, I mean onto, yeah, onto Broadway. And then also in the foreground, you can see the on-ramp to the Veterans Boulevard flyover and the off-ramp just behind it. So that's just kind of a front shot of that, and we'll zoom in a little bit on later slides. So, next slide. So transitioning briefly into some of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, you can see where we saw gaps in the previous slide. We can now see that we're connecting a lot of that bicycle infrastructure from Bay to Blomquist along Woodside Road. So the dotted lines represent the proposed facilities. And beyond this project, there are other planned improvements represented here. If you can see some of those dotted lines kind of outside of that interchange area. And those are not part of this project, but those are planned improvements. And so you could see how this project fits into the larger plans for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in the area. Next slide. This is just briefly going over some of the bicycle classifications. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but we're, we can come back if we need any further explanation. But essentially, we're, the majority of the improvements are class one, two, and four facilities, which are bike, call it cycle tracks or bike trail, separate bike lane, and sometimes buffered bike lanes. And then our class four facilities, which are what we call, you know, a separated and protected bike lane, protected from, from vehicle traffic. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities, class four. Okay, the next slide. So this is a rendering of the intersection at Woodside Road and Bay Street. So you could see the addition of turn lanes onto Bay Street in both directions. And then also we have class four, which are the separated bike lanes on Woodside between Bay and Broadway. And then some, in some cases, you have a transition to class two, which is just the on-road separated bike lane. But they're not, there's no barrier there, and that's to accommodate the, the turn, the right turn movement along Woodside. Now for the turning movements that, that have been added here, they were determined by traffic forecasts, taking into consideration, you know, the anticipated traffic volume, as well as the traffic demand pre-COVID. And the next slide. So coming back to, we're kind of zooming in here on Broadway and Woodside. So we can see the introduction of a separated bike and pedestrian crossings in all directions. We call those a class four crosswalk. There are class one separated bike paths, and those are the, what we, the yeah, separated bike path, that's what it is, on either side of Woodside, as well as there's a class two bike lane along Woodside, adjacent to the traffic as well. And so these, these facilities, the, the class one facilities run all the way up Woodside to end, end up Blomquist. And then there's also a class four separated bike facility along the Veterans Boulevard flyover. And that goes from Chestnut and ends over on Charter. So, next slide. So this is another image of the Veterans flyover here. This is kind of the approach from, you know, Chestnut going southbound, and then the off-ramp northbound here. And then kind of we zoomed in, and you can see where it's crossing over Woodside Road and 101. Next slide. And then here we have the Veterans Boulevard and the northbound and southbound on and off ramps for the flyover. So, and this is Chestnut in the foreground in the UPR tracks there. So there, just I wanted to point out, if you can see on the right, there's a separated bike path along Veterans that ends at the UPR crossing here and connects with the Bay Trail. So there's two different lanes. One is going along the flyover and the other is at grade. So it runs along on, on the road on both sides there. And then you can see on the left, there's another path that's coming along, crossing the tracks there, and then connecting with the crosswalk there, and also the Bay Trail continues from there. And then the next slide. Last rendering. So here we can see the double right turn, one example of that turn movement onto 101. And then that stop bar there indicates that the traffic will have, it'll be signalized, and traffic will be able to stop on, at all lanes. So all the ramps will be signalized throughout the interchange, allowing for a safe crossing. You don't see the, the signals in the rendering just yet. The rendering is still undergoing some updates, but rest assured, there will be a signal there and a safe crossing for bicyclists and pedestrians. So if you go to the next slide, just in general, there's 4.2 miles over 22,000 linear, linear feet of bicycle and pedestrian improvements. What's unique about this project is it's just over a quarter of a mile of, of area that is undergoing this many improvements. So the ratio of project length to bicycle and pedestrian improvements is, is you know, quite broad. So there's a number of, of improvements in such a small area. And so, you know, that's something a little unusual and good for a project of this magnitude. And next slide. Just briefly to touch on, you know, this project supports multimodal movement, you know, to and from the, the planned ferry terminal on Seaport. As you can see, some of those improvements along Seaport and connecting to, you know, underneath the 101, north and south. And where there previously wasn't a really a way to cross safely from one side to another, there'll be connections there. And then with the improvements and congestion and, and operational improvements, we hope that there'll be better access in the future to the ferry terminal. And then next slide. Also, there's one more, two, okay, there we go. So also hoping to assist in, you know, improving the movement of buses, shuttles in and around the interchange, and then access to Caltrans. Just a few more slides here. So just going into the project costs and schedule. So right now, there's 105 million in funding needed to complete the project. 208 million's been raised so, so far. And we are looking to raise another roughly, the, the share would be 77 million in state funding and 25 million in federal funding. So we have a realistic funding plan to meet this target, and we're currently going after that funding right now. Starting with a federal, number of federal grants this month, or in the month of May. You go to the next slide. As you can see, just a demonstration, that 65% of the funding so far for this project has been local. So, which is why we're trying to fill the remaining, you know, 35% with federal and state funding. And then the last slide. Here, so just our progress. Right now, we're, this is the timeline to construction. Right now, we're currently acquiring right-of-way on a number of parcels in the, that are affected by the project. Also railroad, railroad approval in acquiring funding. The goal is to begin construction in 2027 and complete the project in 2029. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your attention. So at this time, I can take any questions, if you have any for me.
Sure, open up to council members. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. One of my questions is, do you expect any disruption to the traffic for extended periods of time?
Disruption to the traffic during construction, or?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's, um, I-
Either to Veterans Boulevard or to any of the ramps to Iowa 101.
That's a good question. We are a ways out from construction. I, I know that when we get to that phase, I think that will be, I imagine, part of the planning process is to kind of look at that and coordinate locally and what that will look like. So at this time, I, I don't have an answer for what, what that will look like, but that's definitely something I can bring back to the team and get further insight on if, if we have more at this time to share.
Okay, the other question was, so is, is this city of Redwood City predominantly owning this project? Or is county also co-sharing that?
As far as I'm aware, this project is sponsored by the city of Redwood City. And then we are just on as the, like I said, the consultant project management team to help deliver the project, as well as acquire the funding and right-of-way. So right now, we are coordinating with Redwood City directly on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council member questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Tiffany, you mentioned that 65% of the project funding is local. What's the, what was the source for that? Is it, is it the cities? And what kind of funding was it? Did it come from sales tax? Or I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out where the money came from.
That is a good question. I know that this project has been in development for at least 15 years or so. So I imagine it, there is a share of local tax funding, but I'm not sure the exact share, let's see, local. Let's see here. Already committed locals, see, in my slide here, it says city property, land donations, local fair share payments, local city funds, is about, unfortunately, all these different shades of blue. I need to look at it on the screen. There's about 26 million. So I think all this blue, the, on the slide 27, shows the share of local. And then there's about 8 million in STIP funding. And then there's a portion there on that left pie chart, which kind of shows the breakdown. So specifically, when all of that funding took place, or how that all breaks out, I can get more information on that. But that's what I have here.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Actually, yes, I have a couple of questions, one of our other council members. And I think you may have addressed it, but was wondering about the alternative traffic intersection design, something like a diverging diamond to help ease the congestion on that section. And I think that's what you presented. The design includes something like that. And have you considered a pedestrian bicycle over or underpass on Woodside and Bay? But I think the bicycle and pedestrian crossings are factored into what you just showed us. I think maybe we'll get him copies of the slides.
Okay, so just to clarify, so that was a question from-
One of our council members who's not here tonight.
Okay, and they're asking about the intersection at Bay and Woodside? And if there's an over crossing to cross Woodside instead of the-
So bicyclists and pedestrians will be crossing the roadway. There won't, it won't be a bridge or anything across Woodside Road, correct?
Not currently, and let me double check. Yeah, no, that'll just be, yeah, that'll just be shared crossing, yeah.
Okay. I'm imagining, looking at that now, with all of the development that's going on on Broadway and Woodside Road, does all of that, the current construction that's going on now, does any of this affect what being built there? And then I'm also curious about the right-of-way. Who's, I think of the CVS, I think of Smart and Final, I think of all the stores that are there now. And I'm trying to imagine what's going to happen if we're widening the road, or are we losing some of the retail? It looks like they're still considered on your drawings.
But- Your question.
Yeah. And then who decides, who decides when the right-of-way is at Redwood City? That decides what maybe gets knocked out in order to make this happen?
Okay, let me just capture, make sure I capture your question. So one, does the current construction, as, as we see it, is that, I guess, I don't know if the word would be conflict, or I don't know, intersect with other, other construction going on? Because I know that there are some private developments, so along Bay. Is that your, your first question?
Yes, and I'm thinking also too of this huge thing that's going in at Woodside and Broadway.
Yeah, so it, it looks like that's the big Google, I think, calls that discussion. And it goes away from Bay to Broadway. That's the entire block where the old pharmacy used to be.
Right, right.
So that's Google. And then the second is the right-of-way, any, any loss of retail establishments as a result of obtaining the right-of-way?
Sure.
Okay. And then-
I think our, my, our councilperson was hoping that there would be an overpass or underpass rather than being bikes and pedestrians being right on Woodside Road or crossing the actual road instead of an overpass or underpass to get over.
So wanting to be able to cross on the road instead of an overpass, or wanting to overpass?
The preference might be an overpass or an underpass rather than it just being on the street.
And that's on base specifically?
I think it's the entire intersection there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bay, Broadway, Woodside, 101, that whole thing. Is there a safer way to get across with an underpass or overpass?
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
The project is contemplating any additions to, to those other streets other than Veterans, I think.
Yeah. Right now, Veterans was, is the main, was the main concern. Well, just given, just freeing up that, that intersection there. But not to say that there are other city planned improvements or other private developments that will improve Bay Street, just for this interchange. It's only a small segment of Bay and Broadway, just to connect with those existing facilities to the interchange. But those are good questions. I just wanted to make sure I captured them on the right-of-way. And then what other solutions were considered for Bay? I will still bring that back to our design team and ask. And then I think I have also disruption of traffic during construction in general. Were there specific, was there a specific intersection or, or, or street that we were thinking of, or just in general? How would this disrupt?
I think it's just in general, it's, I mean, that's just a busy area, period. So, yeah.
Okay, and then I think there was a question on local funding. So I can certainly get back to you, get back to the council on a little more insight on those questions as well. Happy to do that.
Okay. So this evening, the way that I understand it, you were, you are hopeful that we, as a council, will make a recommendation, Tim, is that correct? To what, how we feel about what we want to see the county do, and you can that quickly?
Yeah, if there were a consensus among the council to make representations to the county decision makers, be the county executive's office, or for that specific action you'd like to see the county take with regard to this project.
Are we there yet? Do I still feel we're there yet to make, to say, or do we want more information? We're there?
Yeah, and I think you mentioned that a council member was asking questions about an overpass or underpass around Bay?
Yes, or just in the intersection in general, whether it be Bay or Broadway, that just instead of crossing the road, yeah.
It's outside of North Fair Oaks, it's in the city limits, and it impacts us, but it's their city, they can do what they want.
Of course, but we can just say to the county, hey, you're in favor? We can say to the county staff that-
I don't want to, well, I prefer to be conservative and just focus on things in our districts, but whatever, majority decides.
That we would, yeah, we're in favor of-
Supporting.
Of supporting it, okay.
I think in general, you know, it's a, it's a good project.
Sure.
Certainly will alleviate the traffic jam that's created-
Yes.
Currently with veterans. For sure, I guess, the, the concern remains about Woodside Road being one of the main connectors between, you know, 101 and 280, because there's an awful lot of traffic that uses that, you know, to go either way, especially when there's non-trainee on either one.
Sure.
And, and, and so I resonate with the question from that other council member that you mentioned in terms of pedestrian and cyclists' safety, because it's, you know, Woodside Road is, is, it has a lot of heavy traffic. And, you know, I consider it dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists, even when there are lights, just because, you know, the sheer number of cars you transit. So, you know, I think it would be, it would be good to remain cautious about how much faster is the traffic going to exit from 101, particularly going, that would be west, I guess, or south, towards us, you know, or towards 280. Because if it, if it's, if for some reason it gets higher traffic faster, obviously, that's going to be detrimental to safety. But I guess it's, you know, remains to be seen. I think at some point, you know, it would be a good idea to have overpasses or underpasses. Also because of, you know, 84 wants to be considered a main connector, sort of like what 380 is, which can be, you know, Woodside Road access. So it may be better if you just figuring out.
And I also think that big project at Broadway and Woodside Road, we have no idea what kind of traffic that's going to bring, or what's going to happen. So, yeah, okay. All right. Think, I think we'll make a recommendation to county staff that continue on and we're in support of it. Okay?
I appreciate that, and we'll certainly be in touch as the project progresses. So I'm happy to come back at a later date and, you know, if so desired.
But before I do this, are there any public comments? No? All right. Okay, there's no vote needed, then we'll move on. So Mariella's not here tonight. Item number three was just to talk a little bit about some subcommittee stuff that we had talked about in the past. And in trying to move forward on a couple of projects, one of the things that I think is super important is the North Fair Oaks Small Business Association. So I've started to draft, just, you know, like two paragraphs on, somebody says, well, what is, what does a small business association look like? And it's more just to get some comments from council members tonight on sort of the draft that I've put together. Maryanna, Mariella and I met to just kind of talk about it. And I just wanted to run this, just language by you guys, if any comments, it hasn't been approved or, you know, completely sorted out. But I think, especially in light of the fact that Middlefield Road is, is close to being completed, and we're seeing a lot more activity there, I feel that it's super important as a council that we do everything we can to kind of promote and help the North Fair Oaks, especially along Middlefield Road, thrive and do well. So this is just some language, and we'll, it's really just to say, the North Fair Oaks Middlefield Road Small Business Association, bear with me here, is designed to bring small business owners together to form a powerful voice for the community surrounding Middlefield Road and North Fair Oaks. North Fair Oaks has deep roots in San Mateo County, and the business owners in North Fair Oaks are vital to the community. And the association is being formed to support the efforts of the owners and their employees. The association is designed so businesses can share up-to-date information, connect with other business owners, and open up a dialogue for topics that all the small business owners care about. In order to gather and share some information, we're going to invite the business owners to go through a small survey to kind of understand where they're at, the number of employees, do they know their landlord, do they have any issues? Is there any extra space, things like that? So I'm just announcing just kind of a draft of what we're looking for. And then the subcommittee will move a little forward once we get this language flushed out. And then I just feel like, right now, we need to get out in front of them pretty quickly and just make, let them know that we support them. So Connie's been working with them, and so have I, and then, of course, Josh has developed some great relationships, and we'll talk about that later. That was just, I wanted to update you guys on that. I can, I can send the language out, I can ask Office of Community Affairs to share it with everyone. And once again, bring your red pen, it's not, I'm okay with any changes that need to be made. But once again, I just think it's important that we let these business owners know that we're here for them, and we're, we're going to do what we can. Any comments on that from the council members?
One question is, are the street vendors being considered as part of this group, or they're not?
In, in listening in on the meeting, the NRT meeting last week, it sounds like county is working with them to try to figure out who can stay and who can go, and how environmental health can make sure that things are good. I don't think there's any answers yet. I think it's a work in progress, fair to say.
Yeah, the outreach and education, there's like a multidisciplinary team that's going to be put together to try outreach and education to the folks who may not be compliant, so they can figure out how to be compliant, or, you know, or not. So that's, that's ongoing and in progress.
So, yeah. Hoping that, yeah.
And I was just wondering, because, you know, we obviously have street vendors along middlefield Road, as well as throughout all the streets in North Fair Oaks. And, you know, some of those, particularly the ones that are compliant with business, they may want to be part of it for whatever benefits, you know, this COVID may.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think there's an event actually tomorrow related to this. In addition, OCA will be doing, doing work, you know, connecting with those specific folks. It's good to include them in your thought process.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, one, one suggestion that I was going to tell you is also to, I guess, to, once the business owners gather, maybe ask them, you know, what, what the needs are, also what the ideal, you know, would be for them.
Sure.
And from there, you know, to see what's, what's possible.
Yeah.
So that they can get, you know, the support that they-
Right. And right now, there's no funding for this, so it'll be just boots on the ground, working together with them, so. And it won't cost them anything.
Is George part of the-
Yes, George, Mariella, Brooks, and myself, yeah.
There, there used to be, I'm sorry, there used to be, as, a North Fair Oaks kind of business association, which was obviously concentrated, focused on the Middlefield Road corridor. Do you know if there's any-
No, I would love to know more if there-
I know in years past there were, there was, I don't, I don't know that there currently is, so I'm just, it would be interesting to find out, because that would, I think, help.
Yeah, because they may already have a structure.
I know.
Yeah.
And some of the business owners may, may have been part of these.
I'm, one person that might know is Josh. Have you heard of anything along the lines of their currently being an association? If there are, we, I've not heard. But if you have any old information, or any old emails, or anything to know what the names of those people would be, that would be super helpful, if I may. Awesome, okay. Moving on to agenda item number four. Oh, any public comments?
So- One question, did we, should we get results back from the interest surveys from the council members in terms of who was interested in being on?
No, I still need to get that from-
Okay, all right, because I've got some ideas as far as how to take off a parks, something like that and stuff. Anybody else is interested in that, but I can go ahead and kick that off and start doing some-
You can share it.
Sure.
Perfect, okay, yeah. I think most of you were here when we talked about some of the other subcommittees and whatnot, right? Yeah, okay, all right. Moving on, just real quickly, Connie and I are thrilled to be able to tell you that we do, well, the date just changed, possibly today, but we are looking at a community cleanup event for North Fair Oaks in June. It may not be the original date that we thought of, June 1st, it looks like it may get moved to June 15th. We had a really wonderful meeting with Emily and the group at Sheriff's Athletic League, and met 10 or 12 young people that are involved in that organization and are super helpful and super excited to help us out. So that was a really great meeting, and then we met another, I don't know, 20 or 30 young people in an adjacent room that are sort of next generation of people helping. So we'll get a lot of help from them, we've been in touch with the ecology to, you know, use their services, Office of Sustainability was on the line. We will be, I can't say requiring, but asking for all the council's participation, family members, anyone and everyone that you can recruit. I think we're looking to have at least 200 to 300 people there. The goal is twofold, one, to clean up trash, but me personally, I have a commitment that, and this came out of an illegal dumping meeting. I know that when I walk through North Fair Oaks, there are a lot of people working, working really hard, sometimes two jobs, family commitments, things like that. There are things in our yards that gather up that we don't have the day off to go rent a truck and get it to recology. A lot of renters don't know that their landlords have, that who pay the recology bill, or whoever's in charge of the property doesn't tell them about the two free pickup days a year. So there's a lot of information, and it's all post-COVID, because the county did a beautiful job prior to COVID. But it's just time to get back out there and help some of these people get some of this stuff out of their yard, so it doesn't wind up in an illegal dump. So we're trying to also work with Goodwill to possibly see if we can get people to pick up furniture that is, doesn't belong in a landfill. So a lot of different balls up in the air in terms of finalizing this, but we are super excited. And we've got some commitments, we'll find, if possible, three sites for the big containers, one being the Fair Oaks School, one being the community center, and then we just decide on the third site. I will, I will say that we are going to focus on what I call north of Fifth Avenue, because, and then between Middlefield and Bay, I think that, and then north to Douglas. I think that area deserves a little extra attention and could really benefit from this happening. And then as we get better at planning these things, we'll get another one on the books at a later date in other parts of North Fair Oaks. So that's all I have to report. I'll wait for my turn next. Report out at this point?
If you, yeah. Okay. Thanks, I got a few notes from Emma to share. You already addressed one of them, but you've talked about the Middlefield Road improvement project. They're on final walkthroughs. I think they have some punch list items to complete, as is typical. But they're almost done. The streetlights, I guess that will not turn on or turn over until they've removed all the existing electrical poles, and that process can take, according, apparently about 12 months. So that's for the Middlefield Road improvement project. They have been hard at work on opening up the North Fair Oaks Economic Employment Center new spot with Job Train and Renaissance Center. It's a county-owned facility at 3,000 and 900 Fifth Avenue. Staff have been, you know, outfitting that with different furniture that's around the county. The county's doing a bunch of moves, so there's a lot of stuff to scavenge that's in really good shape. And they got new carpet in there and such, and so they're excited to, I guess, about to open that. We mentioned the Illegal Food Vendor, or event, which is this Friday, April 26th, in the evening. The other event, there's an event on Saturday with Casa Circulo, Renaissance and the Office of Community Affairs, that is the Dia de los Niños event, and Saturday, April 27th. And that is 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., a second half new parking lot at 3,060 Middlefield Road, right in the city. Kids, activities, vendors, live performances, and more. They pull off good events every time, so I'm sure it'll be another successful event. There's some announcements related to Measure K. The county has gone through an extensive process to identify Measure K allocations. That's getting close to being final, but some that are of interest, climate resilient communities within for- uh, climate resilient communities, uh, put in for, uh, uh, an award. It still needs to be finalized and negotiated, but they're one of the recommended awardees. Uh, there's also City of the East Palo Alto Affordable Housing Preservation Credit, uh, or Affordable Housing Preservation, uh, Fund, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Worth of Life Moves. An award to Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto for legal services for equitable housing in roughly a hundred thousand dollar award. An award to the Mental Health Association for Housing Voucher Navigation Program. Get up roughly a hundred thousand dollars. An award for Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, uh, in, in the amount of about a hundred thousand dollars for victim defense services. And, uh, an award for One Life Counts, like breaking gaps, building futures, advancing equity in the mental health workforce. Um, so there's still, uh, you know, probably more than a dozen more awards and substantial amounts that'll come out, including in, um, the category of children, families and seniors, which saw over 200 applications. Um, and I think there, that's gonna be resulting in about 14 million in different awards. Targeting programs like childcare, uh, sort of accelerator programs, uh, programs to improve mental health services to students, uh, that was identified needs in schools. Again, that process is gonna take, uh, a few months to finalize, uh, but that's, uh, something that's ongoing and have an impact on everybody in the county. Those are the, some of the main things that are happening.
You mentioned, um, food vendor event?
Yeah.
What are the details on that?
You guys have the details?
Have the details.
Okay.
Well, um, tomorrow afternoon, a couple of county, um, departments, such as the County's Secretary's Office, Sheriff's Office, County Attorney's Office, Office of Sustainability, and there will be plenty of things in the department of health. We'll be going out to do education and outreach to the food vendors on the Middlefield Road, um, just to kind of inform them about, um, inspection and informing them about how to, um, if they will want to sell their food, uh, how we can get them permitted and how people choose to do that. And so that's pretty much what they're gonna do is just to break, just to see what's out there and how to address that. And then we'll go back, uh, probably expand and possibly follow up on something else, um, which will come out.
Okay. Um, the other thing you mentioned was the streetlights won't come on until the poles are down?
Uh, it sounds like, I, I'll have to find out a little bit more information about the details of that, but, um, she indicated that streetlights will not turn over, uh, to the new lights and until the poles come down, so I can find out a little bit more about why that is or.
Yeah, I just, because, I mean, the first, uh, obviously the first wires that are gonna go through the conduit are PG&E and it was my thinking, in fact, driving home from the last council meeting, that as soon as PG&E gets, they're wiring in, that the streetlights might go on, but.
Yeah, that, that sounds, uh, she said approximately 12-month process.
Yeah, the pole's coming down, I know it was a 12-month process. I guess, I, I guess I just thought once the power was in, we'd be able to light them up.
Yeah.
Be interesting to know why that's not the case.
But I, I can find out a little bit more about why it has to be like that.
If you would, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, good question about the, um, New Job Center, is there an estimate for the opening for that?
You know the date?
I think we're looking at, we're cutting around page. Right? Thank you.
Crowdsource our answer, it's awesome. Yeah, more, yes.
Connie, the district board report, yep?
Um, so just to go off of the Economic and Environmental Center, we're also gonna open a district office right down the street, which is called The Little House, up on the Simon and the Travel Agency with that. Uh, that should be sometime next month, uh, our side of partners, that are, you can see the updates or on social media, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to give an update on was the tree ordinance. We met with the cat, um, Kelly and Connie and Melody, um, about the forward app with the revision to the tree ordinance. So just so that everybody knows, um, the timeline, so on May 13th, um, we will hopefully receive a draft of the ordinance to the steering committee. Um, and then also be shared with the members of the subcommittee for the council. The week of June 3rd, there'll be a public release on the updated ordinance. Uh, between the weeks of July 8th and 15th, uh, we'll have, um, open presented to North Fair Oaks, um, Community Council and then the MC, MCC, but I'm not sure who that is, I apologize for that.
Oh, of course.
Oh, thank you. Um, and then obviously we'll have the hearing, um, the public, um, hearing and then October 8th, it'll be brought to the board. Um, so that's the update we have for the ordinance, I mean, sorry, the tree ordinance. We talked a little bit about the food already, so we'll, um, talk about that. We are also working on illegal dumping and I think one of the ways we kind of found to address that was the cleanup data happening is what you guys, uh, and then our whole, I did a, and Adam already brought that up, um, and that's all I have.
Council members' reports, Blair?
Your report.
Okay, Juan Carlos? Pepper?
Uh, just briefly, uh, attended, um, a meeting with, uh, a couple of community organizations, um, that are talking about identifying sites that could be, um, what they call, um, resilience hubs and this, uh, this is resilience, um, for, um, preparedness and emergencies, um, for, you know, um, natural disasters, et cetera. So one of the participants is, uh, a Consilio, um, San Mateo County, uh, nonprofit that has been working, you know, here in, in the county of San Mateo, maybe take, it's like 40 years or so. They have an office on Middlefield Road, um, eh, almost cornered with Fifth Avenue here. So they're thinking, they own the, the place, they own the building. So they're thinking that they have sufficient space to be, um, a resilience hub. Um, and they are, um, so we are currently looking at the alternatives, uh, for funding to implement that.
Can I just chime in really quick?
Yes.
Other resilience hubs, that's something that, uh, um, one of the departments in my portfolio is Department of Emergency Management. And, uh, making sure that we have places for people to go when the power's out for extended periods of time or the heat is overwhelming or, uh, or an earthquake happens, something disastrous truly happens is a, a big priority. And so it's one of the end points of emphasis for us over the next five years is to, hopefully sooner, uh, but to establish resiliency hubs throughout the, the county. Um, we're looking to use libraries, uh, as kind of, uh, common spaces that people would go, but obviously need supplemental and other, uh, ones, so. County's very supportive of efforts to establish resiliency hubs.
Excellent, yeah, update here. And yeah, I know that the, um, the North Fair Oaks Library, I think they were applying, I'm forgetting, maybe it was, um, can't remember if it was state funding or something, but it was, it was related to, uh, preparedness. Um, so they asked if I could write a, a letter of recommendation for the, um, eh, eh, for the application. Of course, I happily brought that up. So I'm aware that they also, uh, you know, um, potentially, you know, one of those.
Okay. Oh, plug for yet, our library that I wanna see happen for North Fair Oaks, it could be the resilience hub too.
Yes.
That new library that I'm hoping for.
Yes, and, uh, any, any sort of new facility that we construct, any library, we're gonna try to build in and advance the right kind of generators and battery backup and whatnot. And the existing ones, we're currently in conversations this week with PG&E to see if they'll give us generators and whatnot. So, uh, since they cause a lot of these need or, uh, uh, resiliency hubs, I, I think they may do that.
I, I've got one thing, but Brooks, you wanna go in front of me?
Yeah, all I've got is there's a, uh, there's a Sam Transport meeting next week and I plan on talking to the CEO there to see if any progress has been made with regard to the issues outside of Malvinato's and the car wash and parking, that sort of thing. I haven't seen the curves change color yet, so I'll keep following up on that, uh, see what's going on out there.
Okay, I'm gonna close with a little bit of sadness. We are losing a really important person, um, that worked really, really, really hard for North Fair Oaks and, and, um, got up there, took all the heat for, you know, the delays that weren't anyone's fault, just, um, so Josh, um, I just wanna say thank you. I walked Middlefield with you and I know you know every business owner and it's probably what's driving me to make sure that, um, we don't lose that from what you've created, but you have been so instrumental in helping us along Middlefield Road and like I said, I've walked it with you and I see you say hi to him and hello to her and take a comment and things like that. So, um, yeah, it being your last day makes me sad. So thank you for what you've done for North Fair Oaks, okay?
Thank you. Good luck for everyone.
Yeah, and if you need a letter of recommendation or reference, call me. Um, I think with that, um, we can adjourn. Most of you. Second? Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.